Like to call September the 12th, 2023 meeting to order and I'll ask the clerk, please call roll.
Mr. Chambers?
Here.
Ms. Map?
Here.
Ms. Walden?
Here.
Ms. Shinholster?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Dr. Lee?
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum of members present. If everyone would please stand and join us in a prayer and pledge. Our most gracious heavenly father, we thank you so much for this wonderful day. We thank you for this great state that we live in and equally for this great city that we represent. We ask you to be with us as we make decisions for this city, for the people that live here, that we may make this place better. We ask these things in your name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have anybody that has signed up for public comment?
No, sir, no one's signed up.
Okay, we'll move right on. You've all received a copy of the August 22nd, 2023 meeting minutes. Are there any corrections that need to be made? If none, is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I'll ask the clerk, please follow the roll.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
The August 22nd meeting minutes are adopted as official. I don't really have any comments to make other than I'm sitting in for the mayor. Her husband Charlie had, I'm not sure exactly what, but some type of medical issue. They ended up going over to Macon. Just want to let everybody know, keep both of them in your prayers if you would please. Like to, at this point in time, introduce someone to you. Some of you may have met him before, some of you, maybe this is the first time. This is Representative Mac Jackson. He sits right in the front row looking sharp as ever. Mac was a very good customer of mine in Sandersville and we tried to keep him looking as sharp as possible. I would, when I would see clothes come through a lot of times in the business I was in, I would, you know, look at different things and I'd try to size people up sometimes. And so I thought, I've got to meet this guy. And so was down there one day and I got to ask him around and found out he was a representative, has been since 2009, and that people in Sandersville just absolutely love this man. He does a great job. I didn't hear anything bad about him and for a politician, I guarantee you that is something good. Representative Jackson, or Mac as I call him, and I'm sure he would prefer that with everyone. He currently serves on a number of committees in the House, including appropriations, remember that, guys, rules and transportation. He also serves as co-chair of the House Rural Development Council, which works with rural communities to find ways to encourage economic growth and job creation. And that's probably one of the most important things that I think Mac will probably do on a state level. And we want to welcome you here tonight. And if you would like to speak to us for just a moment, or say hey, or come shake everybody's hand, or whatever you want to do, or just leave some cards and say, see you later. But we're very, very fortunate that we have him representing part of Baldwin County now and look forward to a relationship.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And to the members of the city council, I just wanted to come and introduce myself as a new member of the delegation for Baldwin County with Representative Ken Vance and Senator Rick Weet. I'm the newest representative with the delegation. And because of redistricting, my district was pushed over into Baldwin County too, which is different once a year. And I represent Washington County, Hancock County, Warren County, Glassup County, a portion of Baldwin and a portion of that. So I'm just glad to represent you and be here with you. And I do have some cards that I can pass out. And to talk a little bit about the Rural Development Council, Speaker Burns appointed me as one of the chair along with Chairman Gerald Green. And we started our work on the Rural Development Council last month in the month of August. And this council was organized by the late speaker David Rawls in 2017. And we've been working on issues that protect the rural community since 2017. And one of the most important issues that we worked on was rural barfing. Senate Bill 2 gave the EMC the authority to sell rural, to sell barfing. And because of the fiber optic that has been installed in most of our rural communities, we've gotten phenomenal reviews about the speed of the barfing that our rural communities have now. And because of the CARES Act, we got 13, Washington EMC got 13 million dollars, which was a matching grant for rural barfing in Hancock, Washington, parts of Baldwin County too, and see that Glassup County, and see that barfing in our rural communities. So we appreciate everything and I've got some press preview. We had our first Rural Development Council meeting in Mayfair and Farm Bureau in August. And I got a press review that I'd like to leave with you to show you the kind of work that we're doing on the Rural Development Council. Our next meeting is scheduled for the end of October in Statesboro, Georgia. And we'll be talking about healthcare in our rural communities and how we can help to save our rural hospitals. I know there's been a lot of talk about the CON, the technical review, if we're going to tweak that. We don't know what we're going to do when the session begins. But I want to make sure that you know where I am, that you're welcome to come to the Capitol. We start the session with first, the second Monday in January. And we have a 40-day session. And the legislation is passed up there, but the most important thing that we passed is a balanced budget. And this year's fiscal year budget this year was at a revenue estimate of 34 billion dollars. And we're hearing that we do have a surplus right now of about 5 billion dollars. So hopefully we can steer some of those monies to our rural communities. We thank you all for allowing this opportunity to come before you. And I'll leave this press release with Mayor Protem. I think you'll want to see the important work that we do on the Rural Development Council. But again, thank you and thank you for the great work that you do here.
Can you give us a card?
That's true. My phone number, my cell number, my office number too. And you can call me anytime. If you can't get me, call my secretary and she'll be sure and relay the message. But this is my first year, first term of service here in Baldwin County, looking forward to working with you and working with Mayor Protem. We started with the county commissioners just in January. We were able to help them to get some grants that they got, through the federal government, some of the money they got. Also, one of the things I want to mention that I work with people who have served time and they want to get their records cleaned up. So I'm working closely with the Georgia Justice Project to help people to clean their criminal records up, especially misdemeanors. A lot of people think that they can't clean those misdemeanors up. But this project, these lawyers will help them to get their records cleaned up. Because Georgia, we talked about the jobs that we're creating, so we need a workforce. And giving these guys a second chance will put them into a workforce. So we're working, I'm working closely in my district to help young men who have been on probation, been incarcerated, to get their records cleaned up. So anything I can do to help you in any way, I'll be glad to do it. If I can't do it, I'll find the resources for you. But again, thank you. Thank you so much.
We miss you. We miss Chambers, please. But any questions?
Yeah, I want to ask you a question about what you just talked about. What did you say the name of that group was? Because I know so many people that have.
Georgia Justice Project.
Georgia Justice Project.
What they do, they have what's called the First Pride Day. And the First Pride Day is a virtual meeting that they have. And they'll allow them, they'll give you the information, allow you to ask questions. And then you have to work with the solicitor or the DA to get your record.
Right. Yeah, I know a lot of, lot of young people that have misdemeanors. And when they apply for jobs, especially state government jobs, their, their records are so bad and they don't know how to begin to get it done. So thank you for that information and thank you for the work that you do on that because it makes a difference in the workforce when they can get those records cleared up.
One more thing, the governor suspended the gas tax today.
Yes, I heard that, yeah.
That's right.
Matter of fact, I told my wife, do not go to the gas station today.
Look.
Wait until tomorrow.
I'm gonna say this, I just filled up yesterday and when I saw that, I'm like, oh, man.
And your property taxes, I remember they grants this county the property taxes. So if you got homestead, then you get a reduction on your property taxes.
That's right.
Any more questions?
I like.
Been over here all day, I'm ready to get back to things.
We'd like to hear from you.
Thank, thank you. Thank you very much. Safe travels.
Thank you.
Okay, on the agenda, we had an update from the Milledgeville Housing Authority and a construction progress report. And it's been postponed due to illness and will be rescheduled for our next meeting.
Is that correct? That would be my plan.
We do have David Irwin of Malden and Jenkins with us tonight to give an audit update. David?
Well, good evening, everyone. Hope you all are doing well. Again, my name's David Irwin and I'm with Malden Jenkins. I was the partner who oversaw the 2022 audit of the city's financial statements. And I certainly appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening to discuss with you all the result of the 2022 audit. I don't want to take up too much of your time, but the purpose of today's presentation is to provide you all an overview of our independent auditors' report, discuss the results of the compliance report that we issue in conjunction with the audit, hit a few of the financial statement highlights, discuss some information that the auditing standards require so we communicate to you all, and of course, to answer any questions that you all may have. The financial statements themselves that have been presented to you all are the responsibility of city's management and members of the city council. As your independent auditors, our responsibility is to issue an opinion on these statements. We conduct our audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards and governmental auditing standards. And I'm happy to say that we are issuing a clean or unmodified opinion on this issued report. Again, this is what you want. This is the highest level of assurance that we can provide your external auditor. What this means is that in our opinion, the financial statements are considered to be fairly presented in all material respects in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. As part of the audit, there's a compliance report that we also issue called the Yellow Book Report. If you're looking at the financial statements, this, this report's located in the back of the report. But the Yellow Book Report is a report on the city's internal controls and your compliance with various laws and regulations. And I'm pleased to say that we do not have any audit findings reported to you all this year, meaning we noted no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in the city's internal control during our audit. And, you know, with all the new accounting standards that are implemented each year and really just how complex the financial reporting process has become, it, it makes it all that more impressive to present to you all an audit that not only has a clean opinion, but also has no audit findings. So again, that's, that's certainly something you all should be proud of. And I do want to thank Shay and her, her finance department for all their hard work this year. We certainly appreciate it.
David did not ever think about coming and getting her now.
She has to stay here.
Stayin' right over there.
You know, you all were not required to have a single audit this year. Again, a single audit is another compliance report that we sometimes issue, that we're required to issue when an entity has over $750,000 of federal expenditures. You all for FY22 fell below that threshold. So again, you all were not required to have a single audit this year. It's something a little different. Again, that fluctuates from year to year based on the, the grant activity that you all have. You, you've had the single audit in previous years, but that is one, that is one thing that is a little different this year for FY22, that that single audit was not required. Now for a brief overview of your financial statements. You know, again, you all prepare what is called an annual comprehensive financial report, otherwise known as an ACFA. Now, an ACFA requires the inclusion of additional information that goes above and beyond the basic financial reporting requirements. This document is submitted annually to the Government Finance Officer Association, otherwise known as the GFOA, where they put it through a pretty stringent review process. Not only their professional staff, but they also have a special review committee that reviews your report. And you know, when they look at the city's document, their goal is not to assess the financial health of the city. What they want to do is make sure that, you know, this document has the necessary information so the readers of your financial statements can do so themselves. And through this review, the GFOA has once again awarded the city the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. And that, that certificate is included in this year's report. So I believe this is the 36th year in a row that you all have received this certificate. And they're all, they're all back there. And again, you know, it's, congratulations you all on that. There, there are not many local governments that can say they've received the certificate for 36 plus years. So, you know, again, just to me, another example of you going above and beyond, you know, the, the basic minimum financial reporting requirements. And, you know, again, this is an impressive document and one that you all, that everyone here should be proud of. As you look through the financial statements, one section I always like to point out is the Management's Discussion Analysis, otherwise known as the MDNA. It's right after our audit report. I think it begins on page five. I could certainly understand if you don't want to read all hundred and some pages of this report, cover to cover. But I would strongly encourage everyone to read the MDNA. The purpose in the MDNA is to make it easier for a broader audience to use and better understand your financial statements. And, you know, it does this by providing a narrative explanation of the financial statements from management's perspective. So, you know, if you have a question about any fluctuations in financial activity or anything unique or unusual that happened during the year, a, a lot of times you can find your answers in the MDNA. So again, if you can, I would strongly encourage everyone to read that section of the report. The city's basic financial statements are broken down into three components, the first of which being the government-wide financial statements. And again, the government-wide financial statements, they provide a broad view of the city's operations in a manner similar to what you would see in a private sector business. All the city's funds are combined into one or two columns, depending on the nature of that fund. You have a column for your governmental activities and then you have a second column for your business-type activities. And also included in that section are columns for your two distributed component units. Have a slide here that summarizes the city's financial activities from the government-wide perspective. And as you can see here, city end of the year with assets and deferred outflows of resources around $87.5 million. That's around a $10 million increase compared to the previous year. Of that amount, around $44.7 million are your capital assets net of accumulated appreciation. You all had around $17.2 million in liabilities and deferred inflows of resources, which resulted in an ending net position of approximately $70.3 million. Liquor sales revenues are around $31 million for the year and expenses were right at $25.3 million, which resulted in an increase in your net position of approximately $5.7 million, which is somewhat comparable to FY21's increase of around $6.2 million. So, you know, for the year, revenues increased by approximately $4.2 million, but you also had a corresponding increase in your expenses of around $4.7 million compared to FY21. So again, all in all, a, a pretty good year for the city from any wide perspective. You know, you all were able to increase your net position by about 9% for the year. I will say, this is really the only time you'll see the, the city's, the city's financial activities reported in this manner. You know, in the day-to-day operations of the city, the focus is more so on the individual funds themselves. Which brings me, you know, to the second component of your financial statements, which are the fund-level statements. Again, this is what you all typically see throughout the year. This component focuses on individual parts of the government and it reports your operations in more detail than that of the government-wide statements. And, you know, of all the city's funds, if I'm in your shoes, my primary focus is on the general fund. Again, it's the main operating fund of the city and therefore accounts for the majority of your revenues received and funds expended. Have a couple of charts on these next few slides that, that break down the, the general fund revenues and expenditures for the year. As you can see on this chart, total revenues were around $13.2 million and that's right in line with the previous year. Obviously, you know, the majority of your general fund's revenues are derived from taxes, which totaled around $11.7 million. So it represented about 89% of the total revenues of your general fund. Breaking that down a little bit more, property taxes were just over $4 million for the year. Sales taxes were right around, were right around $3.6 million. And other taxes such as your franchise taxes and insurance premium taxes were also just over $4 million for the year. This chart again summarizes the general fund's expenditures by major function. Expenditures were around $12.6 million. That's an increase of around $650,000 compared to FY21. You know, again, as you would expect, public safety, public works and, and general government represent the majority of your expenditures. Public safety was around $7.5 million, I'm sorry, $7.9 million. You know, I mentioned earlier that your, your expenses, your expenditures increased by about $650,000 for the year. About $600,000 of that increase pertains to your increase in your public safety expenditures. And again, you have $7.9 million and that accounts for approximately 60% of your general fund's total expenditures. Public works expenditures, they were just under $2 million and general government expenditures were approximately $1.6 million, both of which were fairly consistent compared to FY21. In total, the general fund's fund balance increased by just under half a million dollars for an ending balance of $5.2 million for the year. And the chart I have on this, this screen shows the general fund's fund balance history over the past five years. You know, to me, it's always kind of interesting to reflect back on where you were compared to where things currently stand. And as you can see on this chart, you all have done a great job of, of increasing your fund balance over the past two years and kind of getting over the COVID year of 2020. You know, one thing I always like to remind people when I talk about fund balance, fund balance isn't what you all have in the form of cash for discretionary spending. Fund balance is essentially the difference between assets and liabilities, only a portion of which is cash on hand. Additionally, one other thing to, to, to keep in mind is that the general fund incurs expenditures of approximately $1 million per month. So you all ended your fiscal year, June 30, 2022, with around four months worth of operating expenditures. So, you know, again, with you all having a June 30 year end, it's, it's, it's good that you all had a strong fund balance has of, has of year end to get you through the, the months of July through November when your revenues are typically down. So again, ending your June 30 year end with, with four months worth of fund balances is, is, is strong. It's something that you all, again, should be proud of. A couple of other funds I just want to briefly mention are your three enterprise funds, which again are your water sewer, your solid waste and your stormwater fund. Enterprise funds, they are used to account for operations in a manner similar to that of a private sector business. The goal of these funds are to be self-sufficient and to generate sufficient operating revenues to cover their operating expenditures. And as you can see from the chart on this slide, each of these three funds did that this year. The water sewer fund had an operating income of just over $2 million. The solid waste fund was essentially flat, as it's been in prior years. And your stormwater fund had operating income around $180,000 for the year. One final item to discuss, again, is just some information that the auditing standards require that we communicate to you all. With the city receiving a clean opinion, no audit findings, the, the information on this side is essentially formality. But again, we receive full cooperation from city management staff. There were no disagreements with management on any kind of accounting issues. There were no uncorrected misstatements. And again, we are independent of the city as required by governmental auditing standards. And with that, unless anybody has any questions, that concludes my presentation. But as, you know, as you can see, there's a lot of information in this report. What I've tried to do is just hit the highlights of what I think is the most important to you all. But again, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those. But just want to thank your staff one more time for their hard work this year. We appreciate the opportunity to be of service to you all and, and look forward to working with you on the 2023 audit.
Thank you, everybody's good. We're just all elated. Thank you very much for your report, David.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
I think like Hank said, get ready to turn around and start it all over again. There you go.
I just want to take a moment to, I know we clapped and everything, but I just want to take a moment to thank Shay. I know that it's been, you've had a tough year and we just appreciate you so much for, for all your hard work and your dedication and continuing to work through your sickness. Sometimes I don't know how you did it, but you know, we're praying for you and we're grateful for you as well and just wanted you to know that.
And we love you.
Yes.
Yes, we do.
I think just as important is, is keeping Hank straight. I think you do, you do a wonderful job.
She can do that when she's not even here. She is always working from home to do that part.
Very good. We're very proud.
She go give classes.
And for 36 years, keeping that certificate and award, outstanding.
Yeah.
That's outstanding.
Well, that's to the whole city.
There are very few cities that can do that.
Being here, I don't know any that can, really.
Okay. All right, next up, city manager for his report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chambers. Just to, to piggyback on David's report, you should have already found the, the ACFA to go along with this audit in your box here at City Hall, as well as the auditor's analysis. And to continue talking in the financial vein, you also have the FY23-24 budget booklet in, in your box as well, if you haven't already picked it up. So, and that is the typical budget document that Shay and her staff create. And it's, it's, it's my bible. I use it every day, whether it's to code things with, or to check balances with, or to see how many personnel's positions we have in a certain area. So it, it's, it's, it's one of the ones that stays on the front of my desk and I grab it almost, almost daily. Just a couple of things in my report, not necessarily associated with items on the agenda tonight. So I'll go over those first and then cover the agenda items fairly quickly and answer any questions that any of you have. On April 25th of this year, you all passed resolution R2304-14. And that was to authorize the city to apply for the 2023 Community Development Block Grant. If you remember, that was to improve water lines in the Milledgeville Estates Mobile Home Park, consisting of Lewis Court and Moore Street. I'm happy to announce that we did receive the CDBG for this project and it is a million dollars from CDBG that we will match with just a little over $126,000 to benefit 83 residents in this mobile home park, 62% of which are, are low to moderate income people. The piece about this that is equally important, is important is what this will enable us to do is it will enable us to put the city's water system in this mobile home park as, and replace the private water system that is there. That is one of our biggest entries on our water loss audit every year because it just simply will not, they will not repair it. And so it will be our. And so it will be our system with new pipes, new meters. We're actually going to use some of the ultrasonic meters with the, um, uh, remote flow sensors on it that, that we talked to y'all about. And we felt like that would be a really good place to do a, a larger pilot program than we're doing citywide, but in a smaller area to be able to, to really see what's happening. And I'm excited about what those meters across the board are going to give us the, the opportunity to do. So we look forward to getting into that project. There will be the big check presentation that most of you are familiar with, with CDBG on October twenty-fifth from noon to one thirty at the DCA Annual Meeting. I'll be sending more information to you about that and, and checking with you to see if you can go to that so that we can RSVP everyone prior to the October third, third deadline in order to be able to do that. But we're excited about that project and look forward to, to it getting started. And we'll be sharing more information with you about the kickoff public hearing that has to occur, that will be occurring here in these chambers in November. Also, I know I received a letter addressed to me and I shared it with y'all back in August where the Allied Arts Board Chair Benjamin Lewis had requested on behalf of his board that the city consider putting Allied Arts employees on the city health insurance plan. We went to GMA to question them as to whether that could be done. And you have in your box another copy of the letter that Mr. Lewis sent, as well as the response from GMA. Based on the response from GMA, it is my contention that the Allied Arts employees, as they currently are, would not be able to be put on the city's health insurance. So the other option to look at is the possibility of putting at least the Executive Director of Allied Arts onboard as a city employee or possibly looking at changing their bylaws, maybe checking to see through our legal counsel if there's some way maybe to, to develop them or to transition them into some type of authority that may, may enable that to happen then. But obviously that all has to be done very carefully not to, not to damage the benefit that they have in terms of being a five oh one C three organization and being able to solicit donations. So I'm going to be provided, it's okay with you all, I'm going to be working with Mr. Davis and Mr. Jordan to look at the state law and see if there's a way maybe that that could be done. Not necessarily to do it, but just to bring your report back to let you know how that could be done. And we can further that conversation at that point in time. We will also be doing some research on arts alliances and art councils around the state to see how they have their entity structured and, and what that means for the employees of those organizations and see if maybe there's something out there that we might be able to do that's not currently being done. But all of that will be brought to you in a report, hopefully fairly quickly, so that a decision can be made. I know in talking with Ms. Schenholster, who serves as a board member of Allied Arts, as well as Mr. Lewis, the board chair, this, this is a, a big part of their difficulty in being able to locate an executive director is the benefits that they can offer. So if there's a way for us to, to assist them with that without hamstringing them in terms of being able to solicit donations, then that's something I think we should look at and we'll be bringing that information to you as soon as, as we get it. But I wanted to let you all know that, that we did hear from GMA, as you can see on the email last Wednesday. And, and that's where we are at this point in time. I mentioned to you and some information earlier in the week, or towards the end of last week, that Ms. Map had, had been in communication with Representative Vance and he led us to believe or led her to believe and me to believe in the same process that there may be some, some monies in Atlanta to maybe help us with some of our most recent water woes. He's not, he's not said what these are. I suspect I know, but I'm not going to say because it's just my opinion. But he asked if we could put together a three and a half million dollar proposal to send back to him to take back to Atlanta. And that's what we have done, along with the accompanying cover letter that you all received towards the end of last week. So I will continue to let you know what the, the progress of that is. Mr. Vance did communicate on Friday that he had received the letter and, and the, the project estimate. And as I mentioned in the information that I sent to you all, if we are able to do the raw water pump station number one, that would shave off probably a little more than two and a half million dollars on our overall renovation of the water treatment plant. And that doesn't sound like much, but it's actually about ten percent, ten to twelve percent of what we anticipate the project will cost. An even better part of that is, uh, according to the proposal, we may actually be able to recoup some of the funds that we had to spend in April to get the, the water system back up and running when that, when the, the high service pump, number three motor on that pump failed. So I will keep you all in the loop in terms of what's going on as, as we hear from Representative Vance. I also shared with you a new job description for the Human Resource Coordinator. It's not a lot of difference in terms of the old one, but I felt the need since we would be advertising for this position fairly soon, based on our previous Human Resource Coordinator becoming our Human Resource Director. We, one of the things that's always bothered me about the Economic Development Center next door is until somebody gets in the door and sticks their head in Carly's office, there's nobody there greeting them. And I, I just really feel like we need to have someone greeting folks when they come in that, that, that building and directing them to where they need to go. So we, we worked that into the new Human Resource Coordinator position. As I mentioned, when I sent you the information, there's nothing in the charter that says you all have to approve this. But you all know that I keep y'all informed with everything that's going on and I just want you all to know that, that this is happening. And I may be talking to Mr. Jordan about possibly changing the charter to have mayor and council approve job descriptions. I think that is something that probably ought to be done, but that's, that's something we can deal with later on down the line. But I'm excited about these few changes that we've made in this and look forward to get the, getting the position posted and get somebody in that position. I can tell you that Sandra is doing yoga's work because she's doing her old coordinator position, as well as her HR director position, as well as a large part of the P and Z position right now. So she is, uh, in no surprise stepping up to the plate to get things done over there, all at the same time with keeping Scott straight as well. So she, she got all that going on, you know that she's doing a, a good job. But some, some items that, oh, let me mention one more thing. You all received in your box, probably about a week, week and a half ago, an invitation to the annual meeting for Visit Milledgeville, which is the relatively new name of the Convention Investors Bureau. That's going to be held Monday, the eighteenth at eight thirty AM at the club at Lake Sinclair. We need to RSVP for those of you that are going by tomorrow. So if you will let me or Celeste or Melba know that you all will be attending, it does say on here ten dollars per person, but Rebecca shared with me that mayor and council fees will be waived for that, for that meeting. So I just saw Mr. Reynolds raise his finger. So if you know now, go ahead and raise your finger to me and I will, I'll put you on the list to make sure that we RSVP for you. Eighteenth, be a week from yesterday, eight thirty AM. How long? I would be surprised if we're not easily done by ten, maybe even before then. So, yeah, it, it, it's not a working meeting, no sir. The annual meeting of Visit Milledgeville, which is the new name for the Convention Investors Bureau. Okay.
When you get Jeanette awake, we'll get her to go.
She's a, I think Ms. Walden may be waking up earlier, but it's unfortunately to line up her and Mr. Way's daughters of former, bless their heart.
I'm scheduled to take somebody to the box to find I got a great aunt. Mr. Griffith, can I ask you a quick question?
Yes, ma'am.
Just, just because listening to what Representative Jackson said about being on the appropriations committee, wondering if we need to send that letter to him, just according to...
Probably not a bad idea.
Yeah.
I certainly will do that.
You know, I perked up.
Yeah.
But we need to tell you about the money.
Yeah, we all perked up.
That's a great idea, so we will, uh...
Right. So it wouldn't be a bad idea.
We will make sure that he receives that and as, as I was thinking about it, I realized that I'm not sure Mr. Williams knows about it. Senator Williams knows about it, so I'll be sending it to him as well, so.
Yeah, that's my suggestion.
All right, in terms of agenda items that you have before you tonight, just some additional information. Ordinance O twenty-three zero nine dash twelve is the first read of an ordinance to amend the progressive discipline policy portion of the Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual. As you all know, we, we have that in the currently, current manual. But Sandra and I felt like it needed a little more detail and maybe a little more specific information in terms of, of, for lack of a better word, milestones about when things will happen. If someone is having to go through the progressive discipline process. I have gotten some information from some of you that will be looking at changing the draft on, but please read through that. This will be the first read tonight, so you all will have two weeks to, to read through it. And I would hope that with any changes that we need to make on the second read on the twenty-sixth, you all would pass that. And we probably will be coming back to you in the next, maybe even as soon as the twenty-sixth and looking at changing some additional information in that, in that manual dealing with city employees speaking to the media as well as the social media policy. So we are, we're, we're, I know you all were working on that. We found some things that we wanted to get done fairly quickly and as we work on it piecemeal and you all work on it completely, I think we'll, we'll find ourselves with a good, strong policy manual in the future. One of the things that is not on the ordinance tonight, but I, I made sure that you got in my report at the end of last week was I thought it was important for us to create templates for the Performance Improvement Plan and the written warnings. You know, a number of our staff are what you would consider middle management staff and other than what, what I and Sandra share with them, they really have not had a lot of training in terms of, of progressive discipline. So by creating these templates, we've created a situation where they basically can fill in the blank in terms of what may be going on and that information is inconsistently disseminated across the city. Not to everybody in the city, but obviously consistently delivered to those people who, who have the need in order to, to see that information and, and deal with that information. So those templates were a part of what I shared with you last week and what was also in your box with the information that I shared within your report, in my report last week. So please be sure and take a look at those two and let me know if there are things in there that you feel like we need to change. Resolution twenty-three zero nine dash thirty-two is the application for the G, the G dot L-MIG twenty twenty-four grant cycle. This is the normal L-MIG grant cycle that we do every year. One of the things that I will be sharing with you at the meeting on the twenty-sixth is if you all remember when you passed the IGA for the T-Splash referendum, we said that the way we would communicate to the community streets that had the potential to be paved with those funds was by keeping a, a, a dynamic list that changed at least from year to year and maybe more often than that on our website to give street ratings so folks could see where the rating of their street was. Those ratings will change obviously after each L-MIG resurfacing cycle. We will be doing with L-MIG this year, again, what we've done in the past. We will be taking money from last year, the funds from this year, and then banking them with the funds for next year in order to be able to get a really good sized contract for a contractor to come in. And based on the rating system that Simonton Engineering is doing for us now, I think we have what will end up being the list of streets paved with those L-MIG banked funds. And I'll, I will share that with you on the twenty-sixth. Simonton is still doing a little bit of tweaking on that. But those may be resurfaced even more quickly if T-Splash ends up passing and those funds are, are available. But we will be, we will be doing what we said on the IGA agreement. And I'd just like to give credit where credit is due. A list on the internet came from Councilman Boo Mullins. Before he left us, he said to me one day, "Big timer, I think the way to list those streets is on the internet." And I said, "Yes, sir, Mr. Mullins, you're exactly right." So that's, that's what we're going to do. Resolution twenty-three zero nine dash thirty-three is another resolution to authorize a traffic signal at the mall. It looks very similar to the one that you all passed in the last meeting. But as I said in my report to you all last week, when G dot asked for it, we just do it and move on. And that way we have enough copies to disseminate where they feel like they need them to go. Also, another G dot piece is Resolution twenty-three zero nine dash thirty-four. That is authorization to submit a request for the flashing school beacons as, as generic traffic signals on Highway forty-nine, near Baldwin High School. These basically will be flashing beacons notifying drivers that the speed cameras that are in front of Baldwin High School are coming up and they need to be driving the speed or at least not more than eleven miles per hour over the speed that's posted on the flashing signs. That is not required by law, but we're going to put those up to try to help guide people's driving in speed when they come through there. It's been a request of the school system and a request of a number of folks who have found themselves going through that a little bit more quickly than they needed to. So we will be putting those up there as well. I think those are all the items for, for tonight's meeting and everything that I have in my report. Anyone have any questions of me? Okay. Thank y'all.
Thank you very much. Okay, we don't have any old business tonight. We're going to move straight into new business. And I'm going to ask the clerk to read ordinance zero twenty-three oh nine dash twelve.
An ordinance to replace the progressive discipline chapter of the City of Milledgeville Personnel Policies and Procedures.
Okay, this is the first reading. It'll come back up in the next council meeting. Everybody have an opportunity to review it and certainly get with Hank if you have any other suggestions. Okay, ask the clerk to read resolution R twenty-three oh nine dash thirty-two by caption.
To authorize an application and participation in the Georgia Department of Transportation Local Maintenance and Improvement Grant for the twenty twenty-four grant cycle.
Okay, you've heard the resolution. Is there a motion to adopt?
Some.
Some second. Shinholster.
We had two motions in a second. I don't even know if we need to vote after that.
Don't need to vote if it passes.
Okay, is there any discussion? If not, I'll ask clerk to call the roll, please.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. The resolution passes. I'll ask clerk to now read resolution R twenty-three oh nine dash thirty-three by caption.
A resolution to authorize a, a request for traffic signal application be submitted to the Georgia Department of Transportation to place a traffic signal on the state Route four forty-one corridor where the mall driveway intersects North Columbia Street.
Okay, uh, is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion. And the second, is there any discussion?
Thank you, Jesus.
We've been waiting on in quite some number of years.
Yeah.
And, uh, hopefully we'll see some action taking place at least maybe in the next month or so.
I think they are, I think they're already doing utility locates now.
Oh, they are? Okay, we might see action quicker than that then.
Yeah.
Okay, we got a motion in a second. I'll ask clerk to call the roll.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Okay, the resolution passes and then it's adopted. I'll ask clerk to read resolution R twenty-three oh nine dash thirty-four by caption.
A resolution to authorize a request for traffic signal application be submitted to the Georgia Department of Transportation to place a school beacon traffic signal on the state Route forty-nine corridor at West Hancock Street and Baldwin High School.
Okay, you've heard the, uh, resolution. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask clerk to call the roll, please.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Okay, the resolution is adopted. We don't have any appointments for tonight, but we do have one alcohol license application and I'll ask the clerk to please present that at this time.
This is for Frank Pendergast on behalf of Black Sheep Barcade, locating at one twenty-eight West Hancock Street for beer, wine, liquor, Sunday sales and catering consumption on premises.
Okay.
Where, where, where is that now?
It's going to be in the old Dodo's pool room.
West Hancock Street.
Old Dodo's Pool Room.
Okay, Old Dodo's Pool Room.
I was, um,
Okay. Hmm.
Thought about that, but then the catering kind of threw me off.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what was.
Okay. All right, you've heard the application. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion, questions?
There isn't.
Okay. I'll ask clerk to call the roll.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Okay, the application is approved. Okay, that, uh, brings us to the end of our business meeting. Is there any comments, questions or anything from council?
I have something that somebody asked me to announce and, and that was that there will be a blood drive on Friday, September twenty-ninth at Allen's Market. It's sponsored by the Hundred Black Men, Milledgeville Chapter, and it's from two to six PM.
Thank you, ma'am.
If you can't make it to, uh, to that blood drive, I believe there's one tomorrow at, um, Georgia College.
One tomorrow and Thursday at Georgia College. And then there's one on the twenty-second up at Walter B. Williams Park.
And they are in dire need. They've been blown up.
In dire need. I'm, I'm already registered for the one. Up there.
That's too quick tomorrow for me. I have to think about it. I gotta bill myself up.
You need to drink some water or two before you go.
I asked the general, would you like to stand and say anything?
They're looking like, what? Who, me?
Which professor is it?
Oh, yeah.
Glad to have you guys here this evening. Thank y'all for being here. Do come back and join us for another meeting.
Just stick around after the meeting.
Come back, come back for the fun of it one time. Yeah. Okay. No more comments, announcements, anything of that nature? Have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Three motions in a second. We'll take that as a get out of here. We are adjourned.